It is now. Good evening. Welcome to this candidate forum. Thank you all for joining us. The League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley is co-hosts for this candidate forum along with the Clayton Library Foundation.
And that's me, representing, should be live, the Clayton Community Library Foundation. We've had a lot of candidates forums, and I could be wrong, and often am, but I think this is the first time that we have had one live on Zoom. And it will be recorded where you can watch it later from the city's website. So since I've gotten pretty good at thinking up things for other people to do, I have a few thank yous to make. Thanks to the candidates for wanting to be public servants. Thanks to all of you who showed up and gave up time you could have been doing something else, and all of you who are watching on Zoom, or if you are watching this recorded later, because it's your time. And thank you for exercising your right to vote and your responsibility to be an informed voter. So I also want to thank the city staff members who have worked to make this event possible. I want to make a special thank you to Vice Mayor Kim Trupiano, who was assigned, the city council assigns a member to the executive board of the Library Foundation. So she has been the person who has been very helpful, especially in getting all this techie stuff arranged between the league and the city staff. So that's a special thank you. And so I think with that having been said, I will turn this over to Paul.
Thank you, Diana. So the purpose of this forum is to present you the candidates who are running for the city of Clayton City Council. These are at-large seats, so not by district, as we've seen in some other towns. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. The League is here as part of its key mission to educate and inform voters in a space free from bias. Additionally, I do not live in this district, and therefore I will not be voting in this contest. The city of Clayton is recording the entire forum. It will be posted to the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley YouTube page, as well as on Contra Costa Television, CCTV. And I was told that it will be posted on the city council's page in the agendas. So it should probably be there as early as tomorrow. So prior to the start of this forum, I asked the candidates to draw numbers to determine the opening order of speaking. And to make it easy for myself, I placed them in that order. So 1, 2, 3, 4. So let's see. And closing statements will be in a reverse order. Each candidate will have 1 minute to answer each question. And we have 2 volunteer timers who are sitting right in the front, Juliana and Melanie. And they will raise a yellow 15-second warning card, as shown there. And a red card will be raised when it's time to really quickly wrap up. I try not to cut you off, but I hope that, you know, once you see the red board coming up, that you quickly finish up your thought. Personal comments about opposing candidates are not permitted. Any statements you make about opposing candidates must be verifiable in the public record, vote, public statements, contributors, contributions, et cetera. Each candidate will be given the opportunity for 2 1-minute rebuttals during the program. Candidates must limit their rebuttal statements to correcting any miss or disinformation from a prior speaker. And I will have the discretion to limit the rebuttal time if this is not being followed. Few reminders to our audience. If you have questions for any of our candidates, please write it on the 3x5 cards that were handed out. And you can hand it to one of our volunteers, who are already busy sorting some of the questions. And the third one, Sean, will also be collecting cards. Questions are screened to avoid duplicates and to conserve time, because we only have an hour, and, you know, we're 4 candidates trying to get through as many questions as possible, maybe kind of a challenge. So it may not be exactly the question that you wrote down, but we will try to synthesize it as best as possible. And all questions will be asked of each of the candidates. So if you have questions directed to a particular candidate, we will likely either not ask that question, or we will rephrase it in a way that it can be asked of all the candidates. Since the forum is recorded, we will ask you to please silence your phones. Out of respect for the hard work that went into providing this forum, and to make sure that there's no improper use of the forum's contest, we do ask you not to film or record tonight's program. We also ask you that you refrain from cheers or applause for a statement in order to preserve the valuable time we have for the candidates' comments. So I will allow one big round of applause after I introduce all 4 candidates, and we'll have another one at the very end. So I will introduce the candidates in the order that they drew the numbers. So first, we have Mr. Jim Diaz, second, Ms. Maria Schulman, third, Mr. Richard Anea, and fourth, Ms. Letitia Holly Tillman. So we'll start with opening statements, and the first one is to Mr. Diaz.
Well, good evening. We have 1 minute.
1 and 1/2 minutes for opening statements.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Jim Diaz, currently serving as the mayor and city council member of the city of Clayton. I have lived in Clayton for over 40 years, and have served on the city council for, since My focus is called, basically, positioning Clayton for success. To that end, I have 3 goals: public safety, making sure Clayton is a safe community for all members of the community; number 2, quality of life. The one issue that keeps coming to me is the fact that people generally would like to have Clayton remain with its current character and small-town charm. Third, a good listener. I am very approachable. I'm at most all of the events that this city puts on and other organizations. I'm available. People don't have any hesitation about coming up to me and asking a question or expressing their concern. Also, on the columns that I write for both the Gazette and the Pioneer, list my direct email address here at City of Clayton and my direct telephone number. I thank the League of Women Voters and all of the volunteers of the city of Clayton that helped put this on. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Maria Schulman.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Library Foundation. I am Maria Schulman, and I'm running for city council. My family and I have been residents for nearly 16 years, raising our daughter, who attended all the local schools and graduated from Clayton Valley Charter High School. I am the current chair of the Planning Commission and have been on the Planning Commission since 2022. I've also been volunteering in the community for years, at the local schools and on the board of the Library Foundation, and on the city-sponsored Special Events Committee. I've also participated in Clayton Cleans Up and the Annual Day of Service. I have been a working nurse for 28 years, managing hospice units and dialysis clinics and working with medically fragile and unique needs children. And a 10-year banker before that, in both professions I found it critical to work collaboratively with diverse populations to solve problems and tackle issues. This is precisely how I will approach my position on the city council. I will work honestly and diligently for Clayton residents. As an independent thinker, I will do the hard work to make the tough decisions. The community is Clayton's heart and deserves proper accountability and transparency from its leaders. I plan to provide that to this community, because its residents deserve someone who prioritizes them.
Thank you. First, Mr. Richard Anea.
Thank you. My name is Richard Anea, and I'm also a candidate for city council. My wife Beth and I raised our children here. They went through all the local schools. I was a police sergeant here until I retired. I was an officer and then a sergeant, so I spent many, many years here doing that work. And as a policeman, that's all we have, is conflict to go to. So I'm very good at listening. I'm very good at resolving problems and keeping people calm. And I look forward to having a calm and professional city council if I happen to be elected to the council. I'm a member of the Clayton Business and Community Association for many years. In fact, our Oktoberfest is coming up this weekend. Hopefully, you could all go to it. I'm also, when I was a police officer for all those years, I volunteered my time for the Red Cross just over by the high school there at Clayton Valley High, and taught many, many kids and adults CPR and first aid. And I enjoy Clayton. We used to do all kinds of stuff here. And I would appreciate your vote. A lot of people know who I am, and I do many things for the community. And I belong to the Elks Club, I belong to the Italian-American Club, and several clubs that have Clayton members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Letitia Tillman?
Good evening. My name is Holly Tillman, and I'm running for Clayton City Council for my reelection campaign. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Clayton Library Foundation for putting this event on for us this evening. I've been a resident of Clayton for over 21 years, along with my husband Matt, and we raised our 2 daughters, Jordan and Jada, here. They've also gone through all of the local schools in our school district. I'm running for reelection, because residents need a leader who will listen and fight for all Claytonians, including our hard-working staff. In 2020, I won my seat by standing on a platform centered on transparency, inclusivity, and community. And those were not just a campaign slogan. It's actually what I built my tenure on. I've championed good governance, fiscal stability, and professionalism, because we deserve a Clayton that works for everyone and values all residents. I strongly believe that if we work together, we can prioritize public safety, improve wildfire prevention with Firewise that I spearheaded, protect open space and maintain our infrastructure, so that Clayton's incredible community resources are accessible for all Claytonians, including our seniors and our disabled children as well. This also requires keeping our staff in place, because a constant turnover in City Hall is crippling our city. I'm asking for your vote this November and during this election to help keep us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So those were the opening statements. Now, for the next 30 minutes or so, I will try to go through as many questions as we can. The candidates will have 1 minute to answer each question. I've kind of randomized the order in which the questions will be answered, so bear with me as I try to keep track of that. So my first question, where we'll start with Maria Schulman, is, "Many cities are facing budget deficits for the years to come, and Clayton is not immune. Each of you prioritize the Clayton budget in your candidate's statements. What are your thoughts on balancing that budget on the revenue side? Would you continue to dip into the city's reserves, as was done in the past couple of years, or would you look for alternative revenue sources, such as parcel tax, sales tax, et cetera?"
On the issue of revenue or parcel tax and sales tax, I am not a proponent to increase any of our taxes. I want to have a thorough line-by-line item look at the budget. And we need to let our Financial Sustainability Committee continue their work and seek out where our issues are on that, and find how we are losing the money and what we're spending too much on. And I think as soon as we realize line by line what is wrong, we can correct that, and then we can manage it. I'm not a fan of dipping into the reserves, although we do have the reserves. But eventually, I think everything will balance out. Taxes are our last resort.
Thank you. Richard Anea.
Yes, the financial situation is kind of unique to Clayton. We have a budget, and we have over $7 million in reserves. Now, we used $250,000 this year for that, which is not very much. But we have to remember that this city and these councils, for years and years and years, never budgeted enough money in the budget, and they would go to the reserves. They've been saving that money for who knows why. That's why we have a turnover of people. That's why they just gave a 23% pay raise to the police department over 3 years. That still makes them last in this county as a police department. They're still last after a 23% pay raise, because they never got very much, very many raises, either did the other city employees that work upstairs, and people leave. And I'd like to correct that by putting the money in the budget and not in the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Diaz.
First of all, let me clear up a misconception that the city is in financial straits. That is not true. We've had a couple of different individuals leading the city from a management perspective and giving very different views. Several things. One, championing the appointment of what we call the Community Financial Sustainability Committee. 3 credentialed individuals in the financial area have been appointed to that committee. They work along with the city budget and audit committee, and the city council, and the city management, to make sure that whatever is needed is there and that we are not overspending. And that's a real, simple thing to think about, not overspending. We're keeping an eye on the financials, and we want to make sure that we have enough money at the end of the day to keep this city functioning very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holly Tillman?
Thank you. Revenue side. We don't bring in enough revenue in our city. We're limited. And I think a lot of residents don't understand that, sorry, I think a lot of residents don't understand that our special districts are underfunded. Yes, we have a large reserve, and it's over $7 million. However, given that our police force is over 50% of our budget, many of you guys have noticed that there's been a lot of talk about the weeds in our community and taking care of that. Our trails are in disrepair. If you take a walk on the Cardenay Trail, that has not been, money has not been set aside for that to handle it. We need to have more revenue coming into the city. And the only way to do that is to have staff, that we've had 2 qualified city managers who have told us we will be upside down in a few years. I appreciate that we have that committee that wants to look line by line, but we have to do something now, and I'm in favor of a sales tax.
Thank you. So you all talked a little bit about the, on the revenue side, and some of you mentioned expenses, and I kind of wanted to follow up on that, is, what are your thoughts, you know, the flip side of it is, instead of increasing revenues to balance the budget would be to reduce expenses. So what areas would you look at closely if you were elected to the city council? And we'll start with Mr. Richard Anea first.
You know, that's a difficult question, because I've worked here for many years in the past, and this budget that we have is very, very lean. One of the things, I was a city councilman and a mayor in another city for 10 years, so I've done several budgets. One of the things I notice here is this city hires a lot of consultants. And if I'm on the council, I would take a serious look at that. They cost a lot of money. And I don't remember many consultants in the 20, 15 years that I was here as a police officer in the past. We haven't grown that much. But anyway, to look at what, that's the first thing I would look at. We don't have enough police officers, so I'm not looking at that. We don't have enough landscapers, park people, and we're just a bare-bones department. In fact, even upstairs in administration, we have double titles for people, because we're trying to keep them going and paying them more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Diaz.
Thank you. Regarding expenses, one of my proudest things that occurred in the last 7 to 8 months was the bringing in of an interim city manager who set the stage for what I call, again, positioning Clayton for success. To that end, he really analyzed the staff, because that's their role, is to make sure that we have the right people in the right place. By reorganizing the staff, he was able to save a minimum of $20,000 a year. That goes a long way with our total budget, only about $5 million. That is a lot of money on an individual basis, but certainly, for running the city, we're very mindful of that, and we do everything we can to keep within those limits. And we look forward to what the Financial Sustainability Committee can do, along with the Budget and Finance Committee, and the city management, along with the city's council providing oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holly Tillman?
We don't have a $20,000 savings if we have to continue to hire consultants, which is what we have to do. In each meeting, since we approved the budget hastily in June, we've actually asked, staff has asked council, to extend contracts and expand them. For example, just last night, we were asked to expand a contract for another $50,000. So we aren't saving anything by having vacant seats and constant turnover, and candidate Anea is correct. We do have, we're at bare bones. As you can see, we don't have enough staff. We have 26.6 employees. That's not enough staff to handle the city of Clayton and its nearly 12,000 residents to get all of the work done. So yes, some work does need to be contracted out, and you can't cut anything else. We need to increase the revenues, so that we can continue to attract and retain employees to stay here to get the work done that our city deserves.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Schulman?
Well, I agree with my colleagues on their answers about we are bare bones. And we do need to increase revenues. It's just how we go about it. And again, it goes back to the budget and looking at it line by line and figuring out if there's anything there. And that's when we need to make that hard decision, if it's a sales tax, if it's a parcel tax. If at all costs, I would like to avoid at least the parcel tax. But again, that's a decision that has to be made when the Budget Nautica Committee and the Financial Sustainability Committee goes through, and we get a final result of what is going on within the town. Yes, we are bare bones, and we don't have very much.
Thank you. Let's see. So we've talked a little bit about money, so let's turn a little bit to the Clayton community. So if you could, please, and I'll give you the order in which I'm going to ask people to answer beforehand, so you can be prepared. First, this one will go to Mr. Diaz, then to Ms. Tillman, then to Ms. Schulman, and then to Mr. Anea. Describe your involvement in the Clayton community and how that ties in with the Clayton values, and how that involvement in the community makes you qualified to be elected to the city council. Mr. Diaz. You first.
Thank you. First of all, again, as a 40-plus-year member of this community, I've been attuned to it. Seen Clayton grow from about 3,000 people to now nearly 12,000 people. 26-year member of the Clayton Business and Community Association, where I served as the chair of the Art and Wine Festival, chair of the Clayton Golf Tournament, which ran for 30 years. And so I really have a good sense of what's going on out there. I'm involved every day with many things that are taking place within the community. And back to the community involvement, one of my major accomplishments, I want to really chime out on, is the reopening of Fire Station 11. In case you didn't recall, but during the economic downturn, that station was closed down and was running at a very minimal level. It is now back to full operating status. They are providing all staff services to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman?
Yes, our Clayton traits are the do-the-right-thing motto, and there are 7 of them. Their respect, responsibility, kindness, self-discipline, integrity, inclusivity, and courage. And I stand by every single one. It's why I've also been on this committee since I was elected, to serve with Peter Cloven, to have all of our students from our local schools, which were the Mount Diablo Elementary School, as well as the Diablo View Middle School, to give them awards for exhibiting those traits. In addition, I also serve as the council liaison to our school district. I served on the Clayton, I was a liaison to the Clayton Library Foundation and the Trails and Landscape Committee. I spearheaded Firewise communities in our city to help keep us safe and prevent wildfires. I also co-organized the Clayton Pride Parades, Clayton's Day of Service, and our Clayton Speaks webinars back in 2020. I'm the only council member who is endorsed by the United Professional Firefighters of Contra Costa County Local 1230, which actually is part of our Fire Station 11. Thank you.
Ms. Schulman?
I have dedicated my entire life to community service and hard work. I've been an active member of the community, volunteering at all the schools. I have also, I'm a board member in the Library Community Foundation. I'm also chair of the Planning Commission, which I've been on since 2022. I have taught my daughter since she was a child that you go out and you help people. We have walked the creeks here, picking up trash, not on any day of service, just to do it, to do it. I have often helped elderly people, go grocery shopping for them, take them for rides. I need to join the Clayton Valley Village to do that officially. But during COVID, I also got ahold of N95 masks. I delivered them to local medical offices and physicians when they were having a hard time getting ahold of them. I also have raised money and donations of computers and clothing and bedding and twillatories for Love a Child mission.
Thank you. Mr. Anea?
Thank you. Let me go back to the 90s. I was on the first Community Services Commission here. It's called the Trails Committee now, so I enjoy that very much. I belong to many things. I'm on the homeowners board for Black Diamond, which is Lower Oakhurst, Indian Wells Way area. The CBCA, I've been on for many years and helped them all the time. I helped create the Every 15 Minutes Program for Your Children that was at Clayton Valley High School. They still do that, because we have many Clayton children that were there, to teach kids about driving while they're intoxicated. And it works. It's a national program. My son is a 20-year member of the police department here. Received many commendations for his help. My daughter is a 911 dispatcher for the fire department. She's been a dispatcher for almost 27 years, so she talks on the phone with many people from claiming their call for emergencies, knows all the streets, and knows the area very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll go in order of Ms. Tillman, Mr. Anea, Mr. Diaz, and Ms. Schulman. All of the current city council members and those running for office this year have expressed their verbal support for the LGBTQ+ community through the Clayton Pride. Do you support the LGBT community in Clayton? And if elected, would you accept an invitation to participate, support, and/or volunteer for next year's Clayton Pride event? How will you support inclusive policies for our marginal community members in general?
I'm the chair of Clayton Pride. So I've been at all of the flag raisings except for the one that was in 2020, because that was during COVID, and I was ill. In addition, we're trying to create a 501(c)(3) to make it a nonprofit, so that we can continue to have these parades here in town. And as a parent of children who identify, and also friends of people who identify, I absolutely support our Clayton Pride parades and the mission of our organization. And we'll be flying that flag every June, as far as I can make it happen. I think that answers your question. make it happen. I think that answers your question.
Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
Yes, I haven't been able to attend the Clayton Pride yet because it falls on the same weekend of the Italian Heritage Days in Pittsburgh. And I'm Italian and have a big family, so I'm gone on that weekend. But I would be, you know, being a policeman for 30 years, I don't see colors and I don't see groups. We're taught that in the police academy 30, 40 years ago. So everyone is the same, if that's what you're asking about, would you go to this or go to that? I'd go to the Fourth of July, go to the Pride. Hopefully we'll have an Italian Heritage Weekend. We just had a Hispanic Heritage Weekend I was at with the car show. So I'm glad we're doing all of these things.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. Yes, I support that LBG community segment within Clayton. To that end, I was on the City Council when we voted and approved to raise the flag, the Pride flag each June. Secondly, I was the only member of the City Council in 2022 to support, champion, help get elected Ken Carlson, a member of the LBG community, to be the first member of that community on the Contra Costa Board of Supervisors. Yes, I'm here. I support. Thank you.
I wholeheartedly support the LGBTQ+ community. I have family members who belong to that community, and in no way would I ever discriminate against them or anybody else. The first parade held here, I was invited to it, and it just happened that I could not get off of work. I was assigned to work. I am a nurse. I couldn't go. The second one, I was ready to go. I was exposed to COVID, and I didn't want to infect anybody. So there you have it. I wholeheartedly support, and I would never discriminate against anybody for any reason.
Thank you. Next question will be Mr. Aneah, Ms. Schulman, Mr. Diaz, and Ms. Tillman, in that order. I've heard from a number of residents through the questions, they feel there's been a lot of, there's been increased tension and bickering at the City Council meetings where one person said, and I can't verify that, but to the point where it might have become physical. So what will you do to ensure that we'll have inclusive, an inclusive environment and also a respectful discourse serving as a City Council member?
I've been to just about every City Council member in person in the last two years, and that's one of the reasons I'm running, because council members can be professional and express their opinions and work things out. Did that for 10 years in Crescent City. And we had problems that we discussed and we resolved them. Sometimes it was three to two, sometimes it's four to one, sometimes it's five to nothing. But this is a professional council. All councils are supposed to be professional. You were alluding to that nearly altercation. That was in the audience. That was not among council members. So you can't pick your audience. You can't pick your audience. But audiences need to be professional, too. They need to be professional. It's a small town. We can argue about stuff, but then we move on. We go forward. And we can get along. I certainly will be doing that if I'm on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schulman?
I believe council, as well as the audience, needs to be respectful of one another. We need to use our ears and listen, and we need to understand what each of us is saying. We have to learn how to communicate with each other, and we have to learn to compromise and collaborate. And until that happens, nobody's going to get anything done. And that is the big thing that's been happening, and you see it in almost all the council meetings. There needs to be a mediation. There needs to be training. People need to understand and compromise, collaborate, and just deal with each other because nobody's going to get along 100% of the time, and that's a fact.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
In the 12 years that I've been involved with the city government, both on the Planning Commission and on the City Council, I've attempted, as mayor, to keep a very professional and open meeting. In those years, only twice have I recalled there has there been an issue. The first one was a developer and one of our citizens that got into a confrontation verbally. It didn't escalate to physics, but we had to move them out of the council chambers. The second one was, again, two citizens who disagreed on some point, not what we were talking about from the City Council. We need to have decorum. We need to have respect. That helps us move things forward for you and all of the community here in Clayton. Thank you.
Ms. Tillman?
I concur that the near altercations were in the audience. And I don't think that you necessarily have to have a 5-0 consensus on the council, but you do have to have a dialogue and collaborate and discuss things. I think where you see, if you happen to see any tension, it probably comes from frustration and that discussions aren't taking place. And it seems like the votes are already decided before people come instead of the dais. I've been asking for governance training, ethics training, et cetera, because I think it's important for our council to have that and for us to move forward together as a community with that. And we are leaders in our community, and our constituents are looking to us to actually lead by example. And so even if there's altercations out in the audience, it is up to the mayor with a gavel to make sure that there's decorum in the chambers. And they should ask for civility before each meeting, just as then Mayor Cloven did, but that was abolished in 2022.
Thank you. Let's see. Next question, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Diaz, Mr. Aneah, and then Ms. Schulman. We've gotten some questions. Well, we've got a lot of questions through the audience here, but we also had people emailing us questions. And so one of the questions that came out of that is, how do you plan to address the high cost of living for Clayton residents?
If only I had a magic wand, and I can do that. It's expensive to live in the Bay Area, so I can't control that. Our city can't control that. Even with the organizations that we have in town who do try to help many of our residents, we have Adopt a Family with the CBCA. I'm a CBC member as well. You have the Clayton Valley Village, which tries to help seniors. The high cost of living is not something that the council can fix, but can we try to have businesses in town and attract more businesses here to give jobs to local residents? Sure. That's something that I believe that we should be doing. But we need to have an Economic Development Committee that's formed. That was also abolished a couple of years ago, or not abolished, but gotten rid of. Those are all the things that we can do as council members, is try to attract and retain businesses here in our city and to provide employment. And I think any new developments that we might have here, whether or not it's unions actually building the buildings that we zone for, that's work for them. I think that's great. But we can't actually give them salaries unless they're our employees.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. The high cost of living, we can have only so much effect or impact on that. We must conform with rules and directions from the state of California. The interest rates that are now finally to begin coming down, again, were not something that the City Council had any control over. That's a federal matter. But they're starting to come down. The housing market in Clayton is one of the most desirable areas to move to. Things have slowed down, but they're starting to turn around now, and new people are starting to move in. It's a little higher bar to get in, but they are. This city would benefit from having a Citizen Economic Development Committee made up of genuine business leaders and owners who can provide with ideas on how to attract, retain businesses, and other development in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
Thank you. We have a little bit of business coming. They closed that postal annex by Safeway, but UPS is coming. There's a UPS store right down the street in Concord. They're going to take over that business. Also, the new restaurant coming downtown, that's two. That's pretty big for a small town. So, but on a negative side, our shopping center is for sale. Not a lot of people know that. And so businesses are hesitant about coming in those few vacancies that we have there because they don't know how much the rent's going to be as a new developer takes that over, not developer, but company. But another new business just came in, and in fact, they're going to join the CBCA, and it's called Stretch. It's right next to the wine, little wine cafe there by the Travis Credit Union, and that just opened. So we do have some businesses that are coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schulman?
I have long said that we need some economic development, and I think it's vital that the city promote the businesses that we do have. And in the same way, we need to do some attraction for new business, either by business license discount or some other discount to attract a business here, whether it be an entrepreneur or some home-based business, but to bring something here. And as far as the shopping center, whoever buys it or wants to redevelop it, we should work with them into doing a complex of housing and retail development because it's at a perfect position on that corner for housing. It's got the transportation there. So that would help bring in some money and revenue to the city.
Thank you. So my original cost was around high cost of living, but I think all of you kind of pivoted towards, you know, how can we make Clayton more attractive to businesses and other people who might want to live there, which I think hopefully people will want to hear about as well. Let's see. I'm probably going to be a bit about, I think I can do two more. So a couple of questions that we've gotten is, people feel in certain parts of Clayton in their neighborhoods, they feel that the roads and the asphalt is kind of reaching a critical stage of disrepair, as they call it. And so how would you propose to address this? And would it be a priority for you if you were elected to City Council? And we'll do, let's see, Ms. Schulman, then Mr. Aneah, Mr. Diaz, and then Ms. Tillman.
Well, I know currently the council is working on streets and infrastructure. There's been, they've been looking at the quality of asphalt. Again, the city does not have a lot of money, and they have to do certain streets at certain times. So it would depend on what the grade of the street was and the priority at that time. And of course, if elected, you would have to look. It's part of the priority. It's part of giving the residents what they need. I mean, if it's in bad shape, you have to come up with something. And there are some funds for infrastructure that could be used for streets.
Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
It's always an issue. We had that in Crescent City for a long time. But Clayton, I believe, has prioritized some streets. Councilmember Tillman and Diaz could talk about that, I'm sure. But there are some priorities and where they are on the list, and that can be changed if it's worse. My street, I had to have the sewer company come out, the county one, because the sewer was higher than the road. You ever hit that, one of those? Oh, man, I was so upset over that. I called everybody. And they finally came and they fixed it. But there are streets that are bad. I drive them all the time. And they're not terrible, because I've been on terrible streets, but not in Clayton. But there is a plan, and I'm sure we would address it.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Yes, thank you. One of the things I think that the city and the City Council did to address a lot of the issues that we're sort of talking about peripherally here is that we brought in, after our last Community Development Director resigned and went on to a future project, we brought in the firm, the Four Leaf Company. They are professionals. They are working on things that will help this community thrive, grow, and become even better than what we inherited when we took over Clayton. We look forward to more development. We look more for more incentives to help people get through this maze of how to grow your business, how to get Clayton back on track. It is one of the jewels of the Bay Area, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman?
Thank you. So yes, our roads are in disrepair. You just have to drive over a couple of potholes in any of the neighborhoods. You can see that the pavement, the repaving has, a lot of them have horrible jobs that were done on them. And that's part of the problem when you put a lot of your extra funds into your reserves instead of actually making capital improvements in your city. And that's why we have a reserve that's over $7 million. So we have health reserves, but we're not addressing our city's needs. So our streets need to be repaved, but instead of just overlaying them like we have been doing, we almost need to start from scratch and bring it up and start all over again. And we wouldn't have the constant potholes that we do have. It's also a matter of, excuse me, accessibility. So if we're not addressing those needs for our residents, being able to get by easily, we've had to increase our sidewalk repairs because they're not ADA compliant. That also takes into account that. And those are two priorities that I have in mind this year is safety and accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll get to our final question, and then I'll have some closing remarks, and we'll have closing statements by the candidates. So we've heard you talk about a lot of things tonight. And so I think I'd like to close with this final question, just as a summary to the residents who you'll be asking your vote for, is what are your top three priorities if you were elected to the City Council? And order will be Mr. Diaz, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Schulman, and Mr. Aneah.
Thank you. My three top priorities, I've stated, they're in my candidate statement. One, public safety. Keep Clayton one of the safest communities in the whole Bay Area, and it is. Number two, quality of life. We enjoy. That's why we came out here. That's why we're living in Clayton. The quality of life is something that we want and enjoy. I want to make sure that Clayton retains that character, that small-town feel. There are, yes, there are some places in the community for growth, and we're looking into those. And then the last thing is to be available, to take your questions and comments and answer them so that you have a better understanding of just which direction Clayton is headed. I want to say once again, my top accomplishments, reopening Fire Station 11, bringing our Police Department in a better financial situation with the General County, and putting our new city manager in place who will lead us to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman?
My three are public safety, accessibility, and our beautiful neighborhoods. And I'll just dive into those a little bit. And this is not our closing statement, right? Okay, thank you. Public safety for me is not just about having a fully funded police force here in our town. It's also about making sure that we have fire prevention, which is why I spearheaded Firewise. I think it's important for residents to actually help us keep our city safe. A lot of us were here when we had the fire in the mid 2000s, and it was almost cresting over Mount Diablo, heading towards town. It's not fun, and it's actually scary. That's one. Accessibility, I just answered in the prior question, making sure that our roads are safe, making sure that we have accessibility with our sidewalks, and improving those so that not only our aging residents, but also anyone with disabilities can conveniently get through town, and keeping our beautiful neighborhoods and trails. We've neglected them for far too long, and our residents need to understand how that's funded through our Landscape Maintenance District, and that's what I want to make sure everyone understands.
Thank you. Ms. Schulman?
My top three priorities are, again, I would say managed growth and safety, as well as our finances. Without our city being financially stable, we're not going to be able to have the safe roads. We're not going to be able to have the growth and development that we need. So we need to address these so that we, as a community, are able to grow and thrive. And we all want to be safe. So we need to have that financial stability so that we can have those things.
Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
My three, and unnecessarily in a certain order, finances, of course. My three, and unnecessarily in a certain order, finances, of course, safety, both fire and police, and manage, making sure that our parks and playgrounds are in good order, and that goes along with quality of life. For fire, I don't know if you know, there was a pretty good-sized fire up Dechel Valley the other day behind the houses. Fire Department responded immediately. They have helicopters stationed at Buchanan Field, and they put that out right away. So we have resources. Police Department, I retired 20 years ago, until today, and still today, we have the same number of officers. We need one more, at least one more. Part of that would be traffic. And let me say this quickly. The chief got together with the Concord Police Chief the other day. They were working a traffic grant, Concord is. He loaned three motorcycle officers to Clayton last week. Do you know how many tickets they rode in four hours in Clayton? Forty, forty tickets. And that's a major complaint here in Clayton.
Thank you. So many of you had completed question cards, and so I apologize to those in the audience whose questions I did not get. Hopefully, we were able to fold them in into other questions we asked tonight. There were too many questions, like I said. After this candidate forum, we do plan to have a presentation about the pros and cons of the ballot propositions for this November. But, you know, if you have other questions, I'd suggest to contact the candidates. I know that there were a lot of questions asked through the Clayton Pioneer that each of the candidates has responded to. So hopefully, if I didn't ask your question, maybe your question was in there. I try not to overlap too much. So at this point, we'll get to the closing statements. Each candidate will have a minute and a half for a closing statement, and we will begin in the reverse order of the opening statements. So we'll start with Ms. Tillman.
Great. Thank you again for hosting. As I mentioned at the outset, I'm running for reelection, because I'm the only one who is running this year, who will speak up for our staff to ensure that they stay in City Hall and try to get to the bottom of why they all left this last spring. I've requested that for over a year before it happened, and it's fallen on deaf ears. I stand for good governance, fiscal stability, and professionalism. I also want to prioritize public safety, accessibility, improve our wildfire prevention, protect our open space, and maintain our infrastructure, so that Clayton's incredible community resources are accessible for all. I'm the only council member who's honored to be endorsed by trusted local leaders like Contra Costa County Supervisor Ken Carlson, Congressman Mark DeSagne, school board members, Ries Count, and eight former Clayton mayors. They all share my vision for Clayton. I've also received endorsements from the building trades in Contra Costa, building and construction trades, Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, the Labor Council, the firefighters of local 1230 and numerous Clayton residents. I think it's really important that everyone also understands that I increased the police officer salaries to recruit and retain high-quality officers. I also approved the funding for an additional police sergeant, and I advocate it for responsible budgeting. But that doesn't mean ramming through a budget without us actually understanding the numbers and where they are. I think that several council members and even candidates will now learn how difficult it is to get your financial house in order, when you don't have the staff in place to actually make sure that that can happen. The constant turnover is crippling our city, and I'm the only person who's vocal enough about that to stop it from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
Yes, regarding the police department again, they did add a fourth sergeant, but not from outside. That person was promoted. So you still have the same number of officers 20 years ago today. So we need an additional one. Traffic proves that, among other things that the officer could do. There's plenty of work. The staff, when the city manager, the last city manager came, he was here for seven months. I went to a couple of his coffees. I don't know if you did, too, to introduce himself and stuff. One of the things he said that really bothered me at the time was, someone asked him, if you don't get your way with the council and they don't implement stuff, what will you do? He said, I would take my staff and leave. And he did that. He took his staff and left. I have never heard of that. And part of that was because he picked his staff. There weren't interviews like we usually do. So we'd have to get into it, why. But another part of it is money. If you're not making good money, why stay at a place when you're last in salaries? Last in salaries. So that's not very good. But I would hope that you would vote for me. I'm my own person, I'm independent, and I listen. My phone number is listed on my brochure. That's my regular number. And if I make the council, when you call me, if you lose that number, and you call the City Hall, it goes to a tape, my phone will be attached to that, and I'll answer you.
Thank you. Ms. Schulman?
I'm asking for your vote in November, because I believe City Council should represent all of the residents of Clayton, and we must bring back to our local community government trust. Right now, we're lacking trust, we're lacking transparency, we're lacking respect. And I think this community, which has a heart of gold, needs and wants and deserves that respect, that collaboration, that unity. And I am running, because I don't know if any of you are tired of what is going on, but I am. And that's why I stood up and said, okay, I'm going to run. Because somebody and something needs to take responsibility and say, okay, I can get in there and do the tough work, and make the tough decisions, and do my due diligence, and get the job done. And I know there's other people on council who would work just as hard to get the job done. And I am seriously hoping that I can be one of them. And I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters from Diablo Valley for putting on this forum. It's important for you, the citizens, to hear from us directly. And they have done an excellent job. They're always here during the election period. I want to thank the citizens as well of Clayton for trusting me on this City Council since 2012. I have done my best to make sure Clayton remains safe, so we can all live and prosper well, that we have an excellent quality of life, where that Clayton community, that small-town character and charm continues. We will have some growth, but we want to maintain that small-town charm and character. I am approachable, I'm a good listener. You have access to me not only on email, but my direct telephone line, and I get calls every week about various issues, from changing the sidewalks to allowing for ADA accessibility and others. And I want to also convey to you that we now have the excellent and most capable city management staff that has taken the lead from the City Council for their oversight, leading us today and into the future. I thank you, and I look for your vote in November.
Thank you to all the candidates. As I said in the beginning, let's have one big round of applause for our candidates. So I want to thank our co-host, the Clayton Library Foundation, for co-hosting with us, the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. We obviously could not do that without a co-host, so we really appreciate that. And I want to thank you, the audience, for engaging in the democratic process with your respectful attention and thoughtful questions. And as I said, I hope we got to most of them. Be sure to vote on or before Tuesday, November the 5th. And for information about early voting, go to contracostavote.gov. And for more information about these candidates and other candidates that are on your ballot, as well as propositions, go to vote411.org. That's a service that is run by the League of Women Voters. That's now nationally. And, you know, I'll do one more round of applause, and let me go through the list as I got them, as they were listed on the Elections Department's official list. Letitia Holly Tillman, Jim Diaz, Richard Aneah, and Maria Schulman. Thank you all.